Well, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening council meeting to order. And before I ask for a motion to receive the agenda items, I'd just like to talk about the shirt I'm wearing. And other members of council are all decked out in orange. And this is an event that started in 2013, and it's designed to educate people and promote awareness about the native residential school system and the impact that this system had on the indigenous communities for more than a century in Canada, and the efforts put forth to bridge to reconciliation. The symbolic orange shirt signifies that every child matters, even if they're an adult. And so that's why we're recognizing today as Orange Shirt Day. And I think it's good to look back and know that there are paths that can be healed, and we can move forward in a spirit of reconciliation. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt and receive the agenda items. There's a couple of changes. D2, which is Trevor Moreno delegation has been withdrawn. There is another delegation, Robert Corman and Greg Chartrand. And talking to the clerk, apparently this came in, but somehow got missed, so it asks that we add this to the agenda. And also, if we go to the agenda, bylaws for first, second, and third reading, G1 will only be for first and second reading, not for second and third. So with those changes, I'd ask for a motion. Oh, sorry.
Remove the loan bylaws as well, the loan authorization bylaws?
So, Madam Clerk, the loan authorization bylaws, we deal with that at the time? Or do we need to, do we withdraw them now?
Withdraw them now, right.
Can I withdraw them as the agenda? Okay, so, thank you for that. So, that would be, what is it?
F2 and G3.
Sorry, which ones?
G2 and G3. No, sorry, not G3 and G4. Yes, G3 and G4.
Okay, so we're going to withdraw G3 and G4. So I'll just cross those off. So with those changes, I'll ask for a motion. Counselor Ferguson, second. And a second, Counselor Kunst. All those in favor? All those carried. I think that's the most changes I've had in the agenda in my entire mayor's career, one meeting. Next, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting on September 9th and the public hearing meeting on September the 9th. Could I have a motion, please? Okay, Counselor Ferguson moves it second by Counselor Arneson. And you had a question. Counselor Long?
Sorry, point of order. It's the late delegation, or the delegation that we're going to have. Can we get a copy of their delegation request? Because I don't know what it is.
Sure. We'll make that available.
Sorry to interrupt, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of the minutes? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. It's my pleasure to welcome the Langley extreme. And I don't have a note here. You won the provincials. What did you get? Gold? Excellent. See? I knew you were here for a big, we got all those medals. So, one thing we love to do is when there's a team from Langley, Langley young people who, or an individual, who achieves provincial championships, we like to honor you by... Is the coach taking out for ice cream or anything? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to delegations. And we have Teresa Penner here. Teresa, come forward. And just for your information, you probably already know this, but you have five minutes to present. And once you've given your name, I'll start the timer. And you'll see the lights in front of you. When it goes solid red, that means your five minutes is up. Okay? Thank you.
And councillors, I don't know if you heard me, I think the mic just got turned on. Good evening, Mayor Froz and councillors. My name is Teresa Penner. This is my husband Jonathan. And together, we are the founders and directors of the nonprofit charity Life App. We are pleased and proud and excited to be here tonight to tell you a little bit about our work. But we're going to start first by presenting to you what our ask is. So I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan. And, oh, I want to just note, this amazing group of people here behind us are a small, mighty group of our supporters.
So we're here tonight because we want to ask the council to review the current categories and application process for community grants. As we've looked at it, although we're doing a work that does, we believe it's helping this community, we're not fitting any of the categories currently available or the process. And so we'd like the council to consider reviewing that and looking how that could work better for not only ourselves, but organizations similar to ours.
So what is Life App? I think the easiest way for us to tell you about the work that we're doing in the community is to show you a one-and-a-half-minute video about the impact of our work. Life App is a health and wellness center for relationships. So have a look at this video that is all about the Harvard study.
If you were going to invest now in your future best self, where would you put your time and your energy? What if we could study people from the time that they were teenagers all the way into old age to see what really keeps people happy and healthy? We did that. The Harvard study of adult development may be the longest study of adult life that's ever been done. For 75 years, we've tracked the lives of 724 men. Year after year, asking about their work, their home lives, their health, and of course, asking all along the way without knowing how their life stories were going to turn out. So what have we learned? What are the lessons that come from the tens of thousands of pages of information that we've generated on these lives? Well, the lessons aren't about wealth, or fame, or working harder and harder. The clearest message that we get from this 75-year study is this: Good relationships keep us happier and healthier. Period.
So as I said, Life App is a health and wellness center for relationships. We've been in the Langley area for five years. Once a month, we do a number of things, but once a month, we put on a fun extravaganza of an event at the Chief Seapass Theatre to start conversations that really matter in this community. In just a second, we're going to quickly show you some of our posters so you can get a sense of what we do. But our events are something like a TED Talk, meets an Oprah Winfrey interview, meets a late-night show band with some great appetizers, and meet and greet afterwards. We did invite you to our meeting this last weekend that we had that was all about gratitude. And we had a full house at that event. We were sponsored by Envision Financial, which thrills us that we've been recognized in the community as an organization that's making a difference for relationships. Some of our events are gratitude. Oh, there we are with Paul Brandt. We just thought that was a great photo. Beyond Me Too, we talked about the women's movement and how we can speak into and move to the next step in that movement. Go ahead, tell me a cut. Love Over Hate, talking about prejudice in our communities. Identity and Purpose, working with young people and helping them discover, who am I? Why am I here? Talking about conflict. Our work is based on the work of Doctors John Gottman, Dr. Brené Brown. Oh, I'm yellow. So we would like to invite you to come to one of our events. Our next event is November the 15th. It is all about men. It's called Real Men and the Myth of Masculinity. I'm not going to blow anyone's cover, but only one of you has ever attended our events. I bet you'd be interested to know who it is, but that's my secret. So, thank you, and we appreciate being able to present tonight.
Great, well, thank you very much. I've got some questions from council. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'm curious. If you're doing events, like our grants programs, our grants program, funds events that are put on that have an open participation in the community. So I don't understand why we need to change our criteria.
Thank you. So I'm going to actually ask Rachel, who's here. Is she behind me?
Yep.
Where is she? To come up, because Rachel is working with us. She's one of our events people. She's pulled information regarding what the city of Vancouver has done for organizations like us. So, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, so the city of Vancouver and the District of North Vancouver both have grant programs that are specific to this type of organization. So where they're providing a social benefit, most of the grants available right now, especially through the township, are for small and large festivals. So this is not something that we actually fit right into. So looking for a way to potentially investigate how to be more aware of what's happening in our communities as we're growing and the needs that there are for our residents, and looking at some of these other municipalities that have already modeled their grant programs in that way.
Okay, but the Vancouver, the city of Vancouver operates under a different legislative framework than the rest of us. We're under the community charter. They have their own charter. But I'm not getting why you wouldn't qualify for a $2,500 event.
Well, currently, they're for music festivals and for arts funding. And currently, like, this program doesn't fit into that category.
Okay, but what kind of money are you looking for out of this?
Well, I think it's mostly that this, again, these types of initiatives right now don't have a lot of accessibility for funding. So even, you know, at any level, there's a benefit to an organization like Life App.
Okay, but you do realize that you can make an application for $2,500 right now if you meet the deadline before January 31st or whatever?
Yeah, so the grants, they're currently closed right now. According to the way the website reads in the criteria, this organization does fit the criteria for the grant, but it doesn't fit any of the categories that are currently available. So it's just more looking at the way that this is currently written to see that if there's some way to evaluate it, to make it more clear for organizations that aren't necessarily specific to the current categories, to have more of a means for a straightforward application.
Okay. Last question I'll ask. How much, though, does it cost for one of these events that you put on?
Between $14,000 and $16,000.
So you're looking for big money then?
Well, I think we're just looking for support from the community. So we have a lot of community partners. We had Envision Financial at the last one. We had some different sponsors that were kind enough to give us donations for, in different areas. But it's not necessarily about getting all of the funding from one place. It's just about having access to more funding.
Thank you.
Just follow up. Did you make an application and were denied?
No, we have not made an application as of yet.
So perhaps that might be the route to go, and then go through the process for a community grant, and then can discuss it with staff. But that might be an idea to at least make. You wouldn't get anyone this year. It'd be for next year's application process, so. Counselor Ferguson?
I'm sorry I didn't make it to your event, but I'm grateful that you're here tonight.
Well, it was a guilt trip. No.
Okay, and I was just looking, was the person at your event, was he wearing an orange tie tonight?
Oh, I don't, I don't give away secrets. We have a confidentiality agreement.
I appreciate that. I was looking over, I noticed that the orange tie caught me. I just noticed it. I, we filled out one that, where my wife and I are grateful, we're grateful for one of your events. So that's great. I hope to, well, that's great. Hope to make it the next one. Now, you're resident of the township.
Yes, we are.
And you also are active in events in the township. So meet with our staff and talk about this criteria. If not, we can maybe work with the staff and through council and maybe find a way of not making the big money, but some small contributions to what you're doing. But thank you guys for coming tonight, because you're really, really positive, especially at a council meeting day.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, you mentioned, as part of your presentation, that you were saying there might be some others in the community that also you think maybe are similar to you that don't currently fit into a specific category. Who would that be?
Rachel.
Rachel.
Maybe Rachel should have.
Rachel had been doing our research as part of our team.
Yeah, I think when we were looking through some of the previous delegations from other applications looking for grant funding, for example, the Fort Gallery, there's a limit on $2,500 for contribution. So it's maybe looking at how these policies on a larger scale can be evaluated. So organizations that really need funding, even on a slightly larger scale, have the opportunity to apply for it. There was also a delegation, some, I think it was last year, I don't remember the exact date, I apologize. And it was a, I think it was like a lunch program. So it was looking for money, and you probably remember more clearly than I do, for teens that didn't have accessibility to lunches. So making sure that they would always be fed. And so again, there's not anything currently that's clearly identified that would allow those groups to apply for funding.
Just one last thing. So with your, some of that collection, maybe some of that, could you submit that to us in writing so that that potentially could be referred to the grant program early next year, if that's the direction council goes? And if council doesn't go that way, at least we have that in the record and that we could refer to that potentially during the grant program next year. Is it possible for you to follow up and do that?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I had just thought of one more question. At these events that you put on, how many participants usually show up?
So this weekend, for the gratitude event, we had a full house. But usually around 200 people. The Chief Seapass Theatre seats 330. And on that note, if there is any movement towards an arts theatre, we are a group that uses an arts theatre on a regular basis and would love to be able to be at the table and be a part of that conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the delegation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, okay, so the next one was Trevor Moreno. And I see the fusion here. He had to withdraw his delegation for reasons I don't know. So I understand you came because of that delegation. But I know part of his pitch was to request additional field space. So I'm going to be asking staff about that at the end of the meeting, because I've had these discussions with them. So you can bring that back to them, and we hope that he's able to come to another meeting and present his, do his presentation he wanted to do tonight. So does that, no nodding of heads, all the girls there?
We were actually just saying that they're screaming, and girls just wanted Rachel's page.
Oh, okay, we didn't know that, yeah. That was, and they were here for, oh, I'm sorry. It, we can certainly rectify that, but unfortunately, it's not tonight.
Let's acknowledge them now.
Let's acknowledge them now. But we will, so that's what I, so we can have certificates. I don't know if you want to come again next week. I certainly would love to do that and present them certificates and give them their own special night. So what you can do, if you just mentioned to the clerk, get a contact information, and then we'll be in touch and we'll have certificates. We're meeting a week from tonight, actually. So, does that work for you? Okay. Sorry for the confusion, but we'll make sure we take care of it. So, thank you. Okay, so we will now bring forward the next delegation, Robert Corman and Greg Chartrand. Welcome here. I think you heard from before, five minutes. And once you identify yourself, I'll turn the timer on.
All right, thanks very much. My name is Robert Corman. I'm really here representing four parties. They're all landowners in the Smith neighborhood. We've got John Corbell, Greg Chartrand, Mangat Shengera, and Kim Young. Altogether, they own approximately 10 acres. The reason I'm here is that I'm the Director of Lands and Natural Resources for the Kukutlim Indian Band. I'm currently building a 120-acre industrial park for the band, and I manage all the land interests the band has in the Kukutlim area. Part of that, I worked in real estate development for about 20 years. And I started my career with Colliers, where I did land acquisition for about a decade. So I'm coming here as someone who knows a little bit about real estate development. And the reason I'm coming here is Greg's my brother-in-law, and he lives in the area. He's lived there for 50 years. He's a local resident. He used to own a construction company in the area and employed people in the city for a number of decades, about 40 years. He raised his children there. And now essentially, he wants to retire to a more manageable home. So for the last few years, they've been attempting to sell their property, and they're not doing very well. And when I analyze the situation, there's some really obvious reasons why the property is not moving. And this letter went to you earlier, but your staff here, I think, probably just delivered it now. So you probably haven't had a chance to read it. But I'll encourage you to read it, because it really enumerates the difficulties that are actually happening in the neighborhood. So essentially, the first point I'm going to point out is your planning department has put encumbrances on the property. They're saying local developers must pay the cost for park and school landing before developing. As a former developer, I can categorically tell you that the carrying costs attached to these encumbrances will discourage developers from ever developing that area. I mean, this is not conventional practice. Some areas do it. Most municipalities will never do this. You're an anomaly. You've got what I'd consider unreasonable zoning. So essentially, the zoning is for single-detached dwellings in the $2.5 to $3 million price range. In contrast, the surrounding land is for residential apartments and townhomes that would essentially overlook the property. The people who buy homes in the $2.5 million to $3 million price range do not like their privacy compromised in any way. If you're building dwellings in the vicinity that overview their property, which is the way that area is modeled, they won't want to live there. Everybody likes the privacy, but when you're quite well-to-do, you're particularly concerned about it. So essentially, the zoning in the area is very unusual. Changing markets, as you probably have been following in the press, the price points for houses in the $2 to $3 million range have virtually collapsed. That product isn't moving anymore. The product that is moving is sort of in the $700,000 to $800,000 range. So the zoning that you have on the property really discourages development. You really want properties that are, if you're going to go for single-detached dwellings, you want something around $700,000 to $800,000. Morning Star, I can bring people in. You probably have heard of them. And they'll attest to this, because they're developing right now, next to my development in Kukutlim. So essentially, the final point I really want to bring up is, adjacent to Greg's property, you've put a star on the map. And approximately two years ago, a buyer came forward offering to buy the property. When they did their due diligence by talking to your planning department about the property, your county clerk told the buyer the star meant the land was slated for a park or a school. And essentially, the clerk's comments collapsed the deal. When Greg went to complain to city staff, he was told the clerk should not have said what they did. So Greg is asking that you essentially take the star off his property. So all in all, I'm really, you know, describing that the recorded development priorities of mayor and council over the years have been to develop the Smith neighborhood. In place, you have a series of policies actively prevent that from happening. And I'd really ask that you reconsider zoning in the area. And you consider the current market conditions, which probably aren't going to change, at least for the foreseeable future. And also, please remove the star from his property. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, there is. But before, a couple of comments. Number one, the star is just an indication that there's a school slated for that area. So I think anybody would know that.
But the star is way off to the side.
Yeah, I'm just saying, excuse me. I'm just explaining that the star indicates that in that area, the general area, that there's a school designated, an elementary school. It's not, excuse me, it's not on your property. It's in that area. Number two is, I don't believe it's been zoned. It's been designated. So you're talking about zoning. The zoning, I'm guessing, because I don't have in front of me, the underlying zoning there would be from years ago. But you're talking about the designation, not the zoning. So property owners quite often come together, and I mean, this is, this needs a discussion with our senior staff, with a proposal to zone it. Maybe it wouldn't be in line with the designation, and that would require an OCP amendment. So there is a way around that. But we won't go and pre-zone the property as a rule. The Township of Langley doesn't pre-zone property. It's designated under the official community plan. So if you wanted to make a change, it's a matter of coming together with a group that want to look at that 10 acres and bring a proposal in front of staff. But that takes a few more conversations from staff. In one meeting today, we're not going to go and change the OCP. It's a process that has to happen, and our staff will be happy to meet with the property owners and go over some of that. So just wanted to kind of clarify a little bit on what the star means. I know it's, it can be, it can seem to be that it's on that property, but really, it's on the area, it's for that designated area, not that property. But I think it would require further conversation with our staff if you want to look at further, how to do an OCP amendment and what type of zoning you're looking for. Counselor Woodward has a question.
Yeah, I'm going to concur with some of what you said. I just may not say what exactly. But, you know, the Smith neighborhood plan, of course, has been a challenge for the municipality. It's been adopted, and it's not really proceeding for a number of reasons. And one of them, of course, is the securing of a school and park site. You mentioned that we're, you claim that the Township of Langley is an oddity in how we handle school and park sites. Can you explain some other possible ways to solve the problem?
Well, essentially, the burden of financing public lands, a school or a park site, for example, usually the municipality in some way will acquire the property. It may not in all of by, perhaps it'll be a series of payments over time. But generally speaking, developers are not asked to do that, or there's some built-in cost factor. For example, you've got an arterial road process underway right now, and you're thinking of attaching, I think it's $63,000 per developed lot for all undeveloped property in the Smith area to pay for arterial roads. Quite often, that kind of approach or policy would also include developing your fund or your bucket for also parks and school land. So that's often attached to something like that. But generally speaking, your approach is somewhat unconventional there. And if, you know, taking the mayor's comment about the star, you know, if you think it's not Germaine, where it's located on the map, which is what I think you're implying, then you're... implying, then your, your, your staff won't mind moving it to the corner of the map, or at least away from this particular piece of property, because it's creating an opinion that that particular spot is going to be used for a, a school or a park, and that's really not fair for the people who are actually on that piece of property.
Unless we move it to the next person's piece of property.
Yeah, so, see, but, see, an amenity.
Let them take their turn, then, yeah.
Because, because one of my frustrations with the Smith neighborhood plan has been that we have, we have four avenues of two oh eight street that aren't getting provided by development for no, years away potentially, because of this school site and, and servicing issues related to this neighborhood plan. And so solving the school site and park site problem in Smith neighborhood may have a community benefit beyond just development in that area, in terms of getting that infrastructure in place, which is not happening because of this issue. The issue, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm gathering the issue is, is that you're, you're not being offered to purchase the property to move on to a different phase of life for two reasons. One, you feel that the township is indicating to the public that it's a school site, and this, and I said you feel for a reason, and then the second is that the density that you're currently designated is not the density that people are currently purchasing or interested in, is that be accurate?
Yeah, that, that's certainly two of the four reasons I gave, yes.
Well, the market conditions are something that we struggle to do much about, right? Because different types of development ebb and flow in terms of the demand that, and the market interests that they have for them, and so we may not be able to, to solve the problem in any event, because the, the overall community plan would have a certain amount of housing within it, and of course, different characters and different housing types are in the interest of the community, not simply purchasing what the market wants today. How would you respond to that?
Well, essentially, what will happen because of the overview issue on that particular piece of property, because you have tall, high-density residential around the property, the people.
They're all apartments.
Yeah, let me talk, please, excuse me, and, there, there are apartments, as he's saying, and, and essentially, the overview, that property, it'll be single detached at, at homes that are in the two and a half to three million dollar range, if you're sitting in your backyard in a home that, that's of that value, you essentially don't want people looking into your backyard. So the people who develop these kinds of sites are going to look at this and say, well, gee, I'm not gonna be able to sell a house that, that falls into that price point, so consequently, I don't want to buy this property, and it's really that simple. They'll analyze who their customer is, and they know who their customer are, is, so, so they, they'll just shy away from that, that purchase. You essentially have to have a piece of property that matches what the, the market is prepared to do with it, and, you know, I agree with you in the sense that the market does change over time, but the definition of what a reasonable piece of property is for that particular type of use has to actually work, you know, you, you can't build a, a golf course underwater, you know, it's just, it's just not possible. So, so that's, that's essentially what's happened to the zoning in that area. That particular piece of land doesn't really work for the designation, I should say, not the zoning, that, that you currently have on it, or at least in my expert opinion, and I do have an expert opinion.
I just have one last thing, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll wrap this up. So I just want to clarify too, that I do sympathize with the issue of school site and park site acquisition, and I believe there may be a larger community interest in terms of trying to get this neighborhood plan going for two oh eight street, but I'm not sure there's much that we can do, because of course, people will buy the property, they just won't buy it at a price that you'll accept, and I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about that, but I, I do sympathize with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and I would encourage that, to arrange a meeting with staff so you can go over the process, because there is a process, for everything, there's a process. If you want to do an official community plan amendment, that has to go through a process. If you want to discuss the school, that goes through a process, and I, I'm glad you came here, because then I can at least impart that to you, that I think the next step for your group of property owners is to sit down with senior staff and, and discuss some of this, and what the process is, and perhaps, if you're serious about moving it forward, you hire a consultant to, to, who's, who's versed in, in, in that sort of thing, to come forward with that, unless you're gonna be doing it, that's, that's fine, but, just my suggestion.
Well, thank you very much, we'll talk to our little group and find out what we do next.
Thank you, thank you for coming by. All right, so we're gonna move on to bylaws for first and second reading. This is F1, rezoning application number one zero zero five four five, development permit application one zero one zero two six, and development variance permit application number one zero zero one one two, bylaw five four eight zero and five five zero five. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second, and Counsel Long, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just want to have a question for staff on this one, if I may direct to Mr. Safi, Mr. Backen. There's been some communication regarding the, some of the road pattern that was shown at the open houses that didn't make it into the staff report, so I just want to confirm that the road pattern on adjacent properties is something that's negotiated when the applications for those properties come forward, or has there been some set in stone on the adjacent road patterns?
Your worship, thank you for, for the question. Through you, your worship, the, the process is actually kind of what Counsel Woodward just described, in that it's not necessarily negotiated, I wouldn't call it negotiation, but rather finding the best solution that meets the public and the individuals' needs. Typically, what happens is at time of development application by any property owner, staff looks not just at the, the subject site, the, that is subject of the, of the application, but rather the, the larger context, and, and makes sure that, that there are no properties that are being left unaccessible, and, and further that they can be developed, they can have the, the same development potential as anticipated in the committee plan. So with that in mind, a scheme is then, I apologize for the use of the scheme, I think council may be tired of it for, for today, but a, a network, if you will, of the road, potential road is, is shown, that is one of many potential ways of, of servicing the entire area, sub-neighborhood, if you will, but is shown for the purpose of demonstrating that there is a way of addressing issues, and a way that, that the property can be developed without negatively affecting or impacting the, the properties around it. So I suspect the, the plan that Counselor Woodward is referencing may have been one that was, that was generated, and I, without having the benefit of, of having it in front of me, I suggest that this application does not necessarily set that concept in, in concrete, if you will. It does provide for one option, which would be subject to change at time of submission of the application of that other property.
Yes, I appreciate that, I, I don't know if it's necessary to put that in a memo form, Mr. Backen, I think that's, that's recorded, and it's on the council agenda, so it may be helpful to, to have that, rather than communicated to council, communicated to the adjacent property owners, that, that is just a draft concept, and, and not set in stone as part of this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you. Just in the drawing that, that we have in front of us here, the site plan, the, the main roads through this subdivision are at eighteen point five meters wide, and just to confirm that the eighteen point five meters allows street parking on both sides of the road, of the street?
That is correct, your worship.
Okay, thank you.
See no further discussion, so I'll call a question on F1. Who carries with Counsel Richter opposed? Move on to F2, says rezoning application number one zero zero four eight four, development permit application number one zero zero nine zero zero, three one, three four two hundred street, bylaw five four zero, five five zero four and five five one one. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, and second, or, or a second? Counsel Whitmarsh, second, Counsel Long.
So, your worship, there's, there's a couple of things. First of all, in the, there's just housekeeping, if we could please ask the proponent to send these pictures in landscape form, so that I can use the machine and see them properly, because they're coming, you know, they keep turning around every time I move the iPad, because I did want to have a very close look at the renderings, and I do have a concern about what's facing two hundred street. In fact, what faces two oh first looks really, you know, quite a bit better, but, and, maybe I'll just put it out for discussion, I saw some of the comments from the open house about maybe mixed use, or maybe, could, could they, could it look a bit different facing two hundred street? So I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there, is there anything that can happen? I could support it going to third, to public hearing, but with that proviso, that perhaps something can be done to enhance the look of it from two hundredth.
Yeah, and I think if this does pass first and second reading, goes, goes to public hearing, then a third reading if there's any, and bringing that up now is good, because it gives the.
Yeah, it kind of heads up. Well, let me, first, if you don't mind.
But what, what exactly are you, are you looking for?
Well, first of all, is there a possibility for mixed use there, would that be even appropriate? I mean, that would probably send the whole thing back to, to the drawing board, but is it not, that's not the area for it, or what?
Mr. Safi?
Your worship, it is possible, but subject to council's understanding, and then approval of a committee plan amendment, the application, as council may have gathered, is subject to the nineteen eighty-seven plan, because of the fact that it predates the, the dates that council not only adopted, but determined has been the, the deadline, if you will, for the application of the twenty seventeen plan. So this application is being processed and considered in the context of the nineteen eighty-seven plan, which is on the screen right now, and as you can see, it's identified as, or designated as a multifamily, sorry, a single-family, nope, residential, multifamily one, that is, the light shade, I guess, the light shade of beige, which is shown here as residential multifamily one, which allows for townhouses to a certain, a certain density. So if council was to suggest, and if the applicant was, was interested, it would require a committee plan amendment that would have to be submitted by the applicant.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, it's probably not appropriate, being that the area to the north, it looks like, is, is more commercially zoned. I guess I'll just leave the comment that, boy, it would be nice if that could maybe be flowered up a little bit, where it faces two hundredth with some, some different cladding, perhaps, anyway, I'll just put that out there.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I have a question. Yeah, it's been over two years since the application was made. How come it's taken so long, and do they not?
Mr. Safi, do you have any comments on that, timing?
I don't know, your worship, the usual reasons why an application might be delayed is because of change of ownership, I don't know if that was the case here, and, and sometimes change of consultants, or unfamiliarity of a consultant with the requirements are sometimes the, the reasons why an application might take longer than, than the usual.
Okay. I agree with Counselor Long's comments, if this is the frontage on two hundredth street, it's not very attractive at all, and I'm not sure it even fits in with what we want Brookswood post-development to look like. I'm very concerned that there are three hundred and sixty-six, three hundred and sixty-six significant trees, and only seventy-seven will be retained. Now granted, that's way better than some of the ratios that we're seeing up in, in Willoughby, but I'm concerned that if we aren't careful, we will take the wood out of Brookswood.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just had, again, a couple of historical questions as, as a new counselor here. Mr. Backen reminded me earlier, I only have one more month to say I'm in council less than a year. Can you, Mr. Backen, can you maybe walk me through a little bit how this is proceeding at all, without a completed neighborhood plan for the area?
Your worship, that story could begin in nineteen ninety-four. The, the challenge, I guess, would say, is that for some time, works were advancing slowly in, in the Brookswood area. Finally, then, there was a, I guess, a few breakthroughs, and there was a number of applications in stream, and while those applications were in stream, there was a, a neighborhood or a community plan put in place, then there was a decision to proceed with the neighborhood plans, but because of the length of the process which some of these applications were involved in, it was determined that some could actually proceed under the previous planning regime, as long as they met the conditions of what we expected the new planning regime to actually look like. As such, there's a number of applications totaling about, well, I was gonna say three hundred lots, I'm not sure the numbers anymore, were allowed to proceed, and I believe this is one of the last ones that, that fits that criteria. Concurrently, with these going forth, work on the new neighborhood plans are proceeding, that work is underway, and I, I expect that there'll be some bylaws before council in twenty twenty, is that our game, our timeframe, so that will then, will then rationalize the differences.
So, okay, so I just want to, because it feels to me like the nineteen eighty-seven community plan, which has been replaced, and we now have neighborhood plans, which apparently are less than a year away from council consideration, we have this OCP from nineteen eighty-seven governing from the political grave, and it frustrates me, because some of the commentary from the open house was, here we go, here, here we are, yet, you know, let, it's too late now, here we go with Willoughby North, and I actually think Willoughby North, Willoughby North should look a lot better than that, I mean, some of the townhouse designs that we're seeing in Willoughby are far superior to that, with street entries, and vertical orientation, and differentiation. I think, I think we punished an application late last year that actually looked a lot better than that, we called it army barracks, I think if it's, if there's army barracks, it might be this one. But the frustration around getting to micromanage architecture is not really what I want to spend my time doing. What I don't understand is how we have some developers proceeding with development before a neighborhood plan, yet others are told to wait. I hear constantly about, treat all developers equally, except for these ones, I guess, and I still have not reconciled how and why the previous council would make that decision, so I simply don't support Brookswood developments in Brookswood until the neighborhood planning process has completed. Thanks.
I think I can only add to that, is that this is proceeding under proper legislation or proper bylaws from the Township of Langley. It is not circumventing anything, it, it is proceeding as.
I didn't claim that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it sounded that way, so, anyways. Counsel Anderson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Well, I'm going to echo some of those comments, I think. My frustration of being a counselor in the last term was, in fact, that legally, we were required to look at these applications that both fit the criteria of the old nineteen eighty-seven plan, as well as what was anticipated for this area, but because that went forward, I, I do question also, yeah, I don't want to micromanage the architecture either, but what I have a problem with is, and through your worship to staff, we have some very particularized environmental studies that are being done for that area, that are going to inform the kind of trade-offs that we're willing to do with respect to tree protection, groundwater recharge, et cetera. So how can any of those be effective when we are allowing this application to go forward without the benefit of those details? Is that correct, that they won't have to conform to any of that information?
Mr. Safi?
Your worship, I guess a couple of comments. First one is, the twenty seventeen committee plan was taken to a fairly advanced stage in that typically, a committee plan that is intended to be followed with naval plans does not provide as much detail as the twenty seventeen plan did. Secondly, the twenty seventeen plan for this area, similarly to the nineteen eighty-seven plan, designates the subject site for townhouse development of, of similar densities, that being a minimum of fourteen townhouses to a maximum of twenty-two townhouses. The current proposal is approximately seventeen units per acre, sorry, not townhouses, twenty-two, fourteen to twenty-two units per acre, in terms of the density, as opposed to seventeen point six that is being proposed under the, the nineteen eighty-seven plan. So with that in mind, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to put, put some of the comments, or the councillor's comments, put their minds at ease in that, even if it was being considered based on the, the twenty seventeen plan, the densities wouldn't necessarily change, they would be the same densities, and as far as the, the works and services are required, it's still the same subject and development service in bylaw that, that govern the requirements for, for servicing in terms of stormwater management, and, and the principles stay the same in that regard.
And, your worship, just a supplement, we're hearing some of the comments about the form and character, I would simply note that there is the rezoning and also the development permit, and council certainly, through the process, can, can deal with the development permit independently of the rezoning, they can combine them if they so choose, but lots of work can still be done on the development permit if they want to see some design, design and form character and setting changes.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. I was gonna ask the question with regards to the two thousand seventeen plan, and so I appreciate hearing that, regardless of whether it was the two, nineteen eighty-seven plan or the two thousand seventeen plan, that this would, would fit in there, and it is the right, it's the same, fits the same designation for the, for that piece of property or that area. I, you know, since, since the two thousand seventeen plan has been, has been passed here by council, so we're over two years now that that's been passed, it's, most of the feedback that I've received is that we didn't have enough density in it, and, and I can remember back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, as we moved towards it, is that we, the biggest concern was that we had too much density, and that we needed larger lots, and now, in the last two years, as the economy's changed, and as housing demands have changed, we now have people going, oh gee, if only we had more density in that plan, and so, you know, I, I think we, we came, had developed a good balance of what we felt should be, and of course, there's lots of people would think we need more density. And of course, there's lots of people would think we need more density, some people think we need less. This is a project that is bordering very close to commercial. And if you look on this 1987 plan, but also look at the 2017 plan, it's very close to commercial. It's to provide density along a commercial area. And so I'm very supportive of this kind of project being put there in this space. I would agree with some of the other members of council that I don't think the particular drawings look that pleasing. I think there could be a lot of things to make it look a lot nicer. But in terms of the concept of townhouses there and the density of it, I think it's, it's the right thing to do. And we need to have that density, particularly around those commercial areas that are going to be there as Brookswood continues to grow out. So, so I'm supportive of taking this to, passing first and second reading, taking this to the public to get feedback. And I have shared some of the same concerns about the, the looks and the design, but I think that'll come out as we move along.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
I think, I think there's been an awful lot said, and I think if you're walking into a relatively undeveloped community right now, and I think if we're going to do something under the 87 plan, let's not use 87 images. Let's try to get, and I'm not faulting staff, I'm talking about the renderings. I think that here's an opportunity for a, an individual that's been given the right to move forward under an older plan, under a past council, not this council, to do something that would be attractive and something that would be, I'm struck for a word, of something that would be beneficial to the community, this council. So it's a real challenge to move forward if you're going to do something in Brookswood, provide something excellent, something that folks that go to the, I guess, the open house and are happy to see, and see something that they really like. And we're certainly not hearing that or seeing that. So I have some real challenges with this. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Counselor Woodard?
Yeah, I just want to, for me, it's not a matter of density this and density that. It's a basic matter of principle. We don't allow people in Willoughby to develop without a complete neighborhood plan. A lot of people in Willoughby waited a long time for the township to get around to doing a neighborhood plan for their area before they could have the possibility of putting the other prerequisites in place to develop. Here in Brookswood, we have a situation where a small handful of people were allowed to proceed before that process completed. So I don't understand the rationale for that. I've never really seen a rationale for that. And I don't, so therefore, I don't support continuing with that. And so for me, I would like, and I also had another question too, Mr. Backen, if you could clarify. So right now, we're charging this developer community amenity contributions in a Brookswood development, yet we have nothing in that program for Brookswood? So would be something we could look into in terms of, if we're going to start seeing CAC revenue from Brookswood, we should consider adding something for Brookswood?
Effectively correct. Right now, the CAC program's in development, and I think we've actually settled upon some of the rates, but not necessarily all of the benefits that will be derived therefrom.
Something I'll just leave out there. I'd like to make a motion that we defer further consideration of this rezoning and development permit application until the completion of the applicable neighborhood plan.
Mr. Seffy?
Mr. Seffy has a comment, perhaps not related to the deferral, but he has a comment.
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to clarify, the existing community amenity contribution policy that we have, it is municipal wide, it is township wide, and it has a number of amenities that were identified as part of a process, which include recreational facilities and, and fire halls and, and greenway corridors, et cetera. They are not geographically based. They are identified as being needed for the community in terms of the projected population growth for the entire municipality. So just provided that for, for information.
Thank you. So there's been deferral, was moved? Yeah, I've got you.
Point of order, I think is what I'm going to call it.
Okay, Counselor Long is calling a point of order. Okay, so it's all very well, but we, there's been a motion made by council in 2016 and 17 and so forth that allows this to go ahead. So action's been taken upon action of council. This council can certainly disagree with it, but I would believe this motion, Your Worship, flies in the face of what the direction was given to staff back in May the 16th, 2017, if I'm reading this correctly.
Change it.
So, you know, I suppose that it's up to you, Your Worship, to accept the motion or not, but I, I don't know if that's really fair either, right? To be changing the rules every, every once in a while. But that was the direction given on, on page nine. Staff are reporting that what the decision was, that in-stream applications before a certain date would be allowed to continue, and that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. So prior to moving on, I'll get some, some assistance from staff on this. We're asking for, the motion is to ask for deferral until such time as the neighborhood plans are done. I think that is contrary to a decision of council, and that I'm going to rule that, that deferral out of order.
And a challenge of the chair?
And I would, yes, seeing challenge of the chair. I do want to remind council that under procedure by law, under improper conduct, 9.15, this is no member may criticize any decision of the council, except for the purpose of moving that the question be reconsidered. So I just want to state that be careful about this. This is a decision of council. If we want to discuss the, we discuss the issue, not the decision of council. And I've just been challenged, that's fine. So I'm now going to stop, and I'm going to call a vote on the challenge of the chair. No, it's fine. It's perfectly fine, so.
You give a point of order, just tell us.
Okay, the point, yeah, so there's been a point of order. And on, on this motion, I've ruled the motion out of order for the reasons that I've given. Counselor Woodard has challenged that decision, which is fair. So at this point, I'll now call a vote.
What does yes mean, what does no mean?
Okay, so yes means that you sustain the chair's decision. No means in opposition that you don't sustain the chair's decision, and then we move forward with that, that motion. So I'm just going to take myself out of the, out of the vote. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to call a question. And what do I label this one? Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, what do I label this? F2 for the challenge? Okay, thanks. F2, okay. I've called a question on the challenge.
So the question is, shall the chair be sustained?
Sustained, that's right. Shall this chair be sustained? So a vote in the affirmative in favor sustains the chair. And the chair is sustained with Counselor Richter, Counselor Woodard opposed. So we now move back to the motion. And Counselor Long, did you wish to speak to it?
Well, I, I think we're happy to, to, the motion on the floor right now is to move it to first.
F2.
Is to give first and second reading, right?
Yeah, first and second reading.
You know, I, I made mention of the look of the front, and there were some other comments about that. I actually didn't mean to, to veer into changing the OCP and all of that. But I do recognize on page nine that it does give the history that we did make a motion, previous council to proceed, and that's what we have in front of us. I think some input from the public hearing, if it was to, to get to that, will be very helpful in moving forward, and so I'm going to support it. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I, I don't, I just want to make it be known that I think that the, the applicant can do some more work prior to a public hearing. An opportunity to be given, an opportunity by he or she has been given, given an opportunity by a previous council, which, you know, I accept. And I'm not in the business, we're not in the business of changing things that have been put into, to motion in a formal manner. So I, I just think I'd like to see some changes made into renderings and, and architectural design and otherwise. So I, I won't be moving until, to see a public hearing, until I see something. And I think that makes sense, gives the person more time.
So just, just to help clarify, if this does pass, it goes to the, the public hearing as scheduled. At that point, the proponent, we've seen this in the past, the proponent has come down, taking the information and, and the input that I've heard from council at first and second reading, and can give us that. So just, just to give you a little bit of comfort, that may or may not happen, I don't know. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Worship. I'm going to tread carefully here with my comments. But I would say, having been in a situation where I know council has made a decision which has crystallized something going forward, we still, as individual counselors, have unfettered discretion at all times to make the decision that we feel is right for our community.
That's right, you do. Counselor Long? I just wanted to, I understand, but I was going to call point of order again, because Mr. Backen had specifically said that there's two things in front of us, the zoning and the development permit. So certainly, the comments that I've heard from other councillors and that I made myself about the look of it could be dealt with, deferring the development.
How many times does Counselor Long get to speak, Mr.?
He, he did speak to point of order earlier, so that's why.
It's not his third time speaking?
No, I, it's the second time.
I better take advantage of this now, I've got 10 minutes, right?
We could call a question, I think, if this fairly.
Anyway, I'm just going to say, Your Worship, please, I, I, I'm going to support it, but I do, I brought up concerns about the look, and I think that that can be dealt with at the development permit stage. So there are two things we're looking at. One is the zoning to get it going, the other one is what it's going to look like. So I'm going to support going through to public hearing, and then we can just discuss what it can look like from the public's input and other, other inputs, too. Thank you, and I won't speak again.
Thank you. I'm going to call the question on F2. And F2 is defeated on a tie vote. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Richter, Counselor Woodard, Counselor Anderson opposed.
Should I vote for the deferral?
I think it's disappointing, we can't go to a public hearing for this. That could be reconsidered. F3, rezoning application number 100583, Valera Brands Incorporated, bylaw number 5510. Have a motion, please? Counselor Anderson, seconder. Counselor Whitmarsh? Counselor Richter?
Yes, I note that this building is going to be used for processing of cannabis. And so I had a question through you to staff, Mr. Mayor. Are there additional safety requirements required for this building as a result of what will be processed? For example, oils being highly inflammatory. So are we, are the safety systems in this building going to be upgraded? I guess is the question I'm asking.
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. The answer is, it depends on the, the existing building's features, and, and I guess how it was constructed and when it was constructed. So ultimately, it will have to be addressed. If in fact, any modification or improvements are needed, it would be addressed at the time of building permit application, Your Worship.
Okay, so is there any way we can find out before we give it third reading if this building is, for example, sprinkled inside? Because we know sprinkling systems or sprinkler systems have a significantly improved safety aspect to them.
Based on the, the type of use, it's an industrial building, so I would suggest that it was, it is likely sprinkled. But again, that depends on the age of the building, which I'm not aware of, Worship.
Okay. Could council get, I think this will probably go through to public hearing, but could council please get an update on whether the building does have a sprinkler system before we give it third? And whether or not we can require a sprinkler system to be installed, if it's not?
Thank you. Take that as direction, Mr. Backen? Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on F3. Counselor Long is absent, if you could just record that. I'll just, attendance, Mark absent. Okay, I'm going to call the question again. I'm calling it again because I have to record. Counselor Long is absent. Thank you. And it carries unanimously. All right, next one for first and second only is the, is G1. It's a low-carbon mobility plan, electric vehicles, bylaw number 5396. Could I have a motion, please?
Your Worship, may I just interject quickly? And with apologies to council, I'd like to request an amendment in that the, the bylaw be given first and second reading and not third reading?
Yes, yes, I've already, I've already done that on the agenda, and I've called for first and second reading. Thank you. Yeah, well, that's been done. So first and second reading, and in the, so in the motion, it says first, second, and third, so, so we know that that is not being moved. So the third part, so if I could have a mover, please? Counselor Ferguson, second. Counselor Anderson, discussion on G1. Counselor Richter?
I just had a question. I, I mean, it's a very nice-looking plan, and I'm glad we've put this together, but I'm just wondering, do we have any kind of an idea of what the financial impact to the township is going to be, or if there will be a financial impact to the township going forward with this plan?
Your Worship, the details of the plan indicate that there are what could be categorized as short-term, medium-term, and long-term initiatives or steps that could be taken. Low cost are the ones that are short-term, in that they don't require additional funding. And those are the ones that staff could, could start implementing straight away, subject to council's, council's direction and consent. And there are others that will require council's approval of, of funding allocation that will be included in the future years' budget processes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Oh, yes, Your Worship. I just wanted to comment, it's not really a question, but as somebody who represents the township on the Climate Action Committee at Metro, I'm so delighted to see that our staff has put this together. I know that they work diligently to plan and implement many different strategies for the township, but I happen to know from speaking to them that one of our larger issues is actually the greenhouse gases that are created by our transportation system. So I think it's really critical that we look at all policies and find something that's very comprehensive, which this is. I'm glad that Counselor Richter asked the question about the financing of it, because I think that's an important criteria. We have to be economically sustainable as well as environmentally. However, I think that working together, we can find ways to balance some of these interests in that there will be cost savings over time. For example, I do know that, although I'm not mechanically inclined, I know that cars that are electric require a lot less maintenance than an electric vehicle. And so there is that sense that there will be some cost benefits that will accrue from that. So I think overall, we really need to look at this as an important and integral next step to our climate action commitments. And I'm hoping that actually, I personally would like to bring this forward to Metro, because I think many of the different communities can learn from the example of other local governments, which we do, and that we can work together collaboratively to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that in report that it shows a cost recovery for the township of Langley on providing electricity to people in private cars. And Mr. Backen, is there an opportunity to actually, at some point in time, because we may be competing with private sector, to make a profit off of selling electricity to private vehicle owners?
Your Worship, we've got to be cautious in terms of the use of profit. Our mandate is cost recovery, not to actually charge anything more than our fixed variable costs and overhead costs. So we certainly could recover those as we go forward, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just concerned that in time, we might be competing with the private market for something that'll be supplied to the private market. I think it's great. I know there's some subsidies and BCA Hydro at this point, but at such time, you know, just for council to be aware of us, at some point, it might be years down the road, that we want to be looking at that. So with that, I'll call a question on G1. And it carries unanimously. And move on to G2, and this is for first, second, and third reading. The 2020 permissive tax exemptions, amending bylaw number 2019, bylaw 5512. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Long, seconder. Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion, seeing none, call the question. Carries unanimously. And G3, G4 are removed. We go to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H1, rezoning application number 100555, and development permit application number 101052. Shen Feng, it's bylaw number 5495. Could I have a motion, please? Have a motion. Counselor Long, and seconder. Counselor Kuntz, discussion, seeing none, call a question on H1. It carries unanimously. Move on to H2, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100160, and development permit application numbers 100971, 101091, and 101092. This is Mitchell Latimer, bylaw 5491 and 5492. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Anderson, second by Counselor Kuntz, discussion, seeing none, call the question, Carries unanimously. Okay. I'll put your, just give me a second, a second here. There you go.
Just a note for the clerk, I'm going to declare a conflict on I1.
Yep. Okay, so, and I'm going to go to bylaws for Okay. So, and I'm going to go to bylaws for consideration at third and, third reading and for final adoption. Zoning bylaw 2019, update. Bylaw number 5490. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Long, secondaire. Councillor Ferguson, discussion on I1. Councillor Arneson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question through you to staff. On page three of the electronic report, there's a reference to the disability parking spaces. And I'm wondering, it does reference the building code from 2012, but it seems to me that the number of parking spots that is the current requirement is somewhat limited. So I'm wondering if staff could just comment on the rationale for that when we have an aging society and people who are maybe physically challenged.
Your Worship, I'm going to have to defer to staff and see if there's a response from Mr. Richardson.
Excuse me, I'll just clear my mic on. There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Councillor Arneson, the proposed amendment there just actually replaces a building code provision. So previously, there was a provision within the building code that provided for those items that then was put in the zoning Yes, sorry about that. I got it reversed in my mind. The adoption of the 2018 building code resulted in the removal of language in the previous 2018 version of the code regarding accessible parking. An amendment is then needed to add that provision to the zoning bylaw to be consistent with those provisions. And I apologize, I had it twisted in my mind.
No, it's fine. Thank you. I don't expect you to remember every line of every bylaw verbatim. But thank you for that. Okay, Councillor Richter.
Yes, I just had a question through you to staff, and I'm not sure it applies to this particular bylaw, or if it applies to another bylaw. But we have had issues come up in the very recent past with regards to new houses going into existing subdivisions, where the new houses are built at a significantly higher grade than the existing, the surrounding existing houses. And I'm wondering, is that addressed in this one, or is it addressed, or could it be, or will it be addressed in another bylaw?
Your Worship, the concern raised by Councillor Richter was addressed in another bylaw, that being the subdivision and development servicing bylaw that council adopted earlier this year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See no further discussions. I'll call the question for I1. And it carries unanimously. Someone could ask Councillor Woodward to return. All right. So now we'll move on to I2. And this is Heritage Revitalization Agreement, application number 100574. And it is bylaw 5493. This is for third and final reading. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Whitmarsh, secondaire. Councillor Kuntz, discussion. See none. I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, you had a question. I missed that. Councillor Long.
I just want to clarify then. So this, this home was on the property that's being redeveloped, but the opponent is fixing it up and moving it. Is this on?
Up to the corner.
Yeah, oh, I see. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yep, thank you. That's the one. Okay, I'll call the question on I2. Carries unanimously. And we're on to bylaws for final adoption, and the cannabis production farm bylaw, 5496, 5497, 5498. I would ask for a motion to defer this to allow staff to get legal advice, bring back to future council meeting. It's been moved by Councillor Ferguson, second. By Councillor Kuntz, discussion. Seeing none. Call the question. Oh, sorry, there's a question here. Councillor Long.
I just wanted to, I think I mentioned this last time when we deferred it. I mean, what's the downside of adopting it and then making some adjustments down the road? I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing here, which it sounds like, you know, that's the advice of staff. But we could adopt it and then with further advice, make some alterations, or is that too cumbersome?
One Mr. Backen can answer. One of them is that it has to go to the ministry twice.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, right.
That's, that's a big part.
Worship, there's a bit, there's a bit more of a basic issue, which really we can, we can confirm is the measurement of odor, making sure we have an empirical standard for the measurement of odor. More detail gets us into some of the legal, I guess, positions on that and the consequences, which we don't really want to be mentioning, because we talked about those in a closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call the question on the deferral, J1. It carries unanimously. And final adoption for rezoning up, J2, rezoning application number 100572, Segway International Court, bylaw 5476. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Long, secondaire. Councillor Kuntz and Councillor Richter.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure before we give this final that odor will be controlled for this application.
Mr. Seffy.
In terms of compliance with the requirements and regulations of the C N D agencies, Your Worship, health Canada requirements will be complied with, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Yeah, I just want to note that, of course, we're going to be final reading, but this is happening in a industrial zone, which is where I think I've always envisioned this type of operation to be. And I think you did, council voted on another one earlier for first and second reading that I had to go to the, leave the room for. But I think that's, this is where these facilities belong. That particular building used to be a gold smelter, I believe. So it's plenty of, yeah, it's a suitable location if there were one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson.
I agree with Councillor Long. This is a message, I think, to the industry and also the government, and anybody will listen. I think if we're going to have this type of operation, we have a lot more controls in an industrial zone. And I think it's a win-win-win for that particular area. So I think that's certainly a message. Thank you.
Thank you. See no further discussion. I'll call the question on J2. Carries unanimously. And to the mayor and council report. So good evening to those of you who remained, and welcome here. Several things happened. The last was three weeks we've been off for a while. So as Vice Chair of Translink, I was invited to Metro Vancouver to provide closing remarks at the Rail Evolution Conference on Wednesday, September 11. On Thursday, September 12, I attended a meeting with Minister and Deputy Premier Carol James regarding the speculation of vacancy tax. And this was a gathering of mayors that are affected throughout British Columbia on that speculation of vacancy tax. And so they did a presentation, and the mayors all had their comments on that tax. On Saturday, September, and basically that was part of the legislation for the ministry to do some consultation.
I dropped my tie that day, too.
Oh, my goodness. On Saturday, September 14, was the celebration of life for former council member Dean Drysdale. And we send our deepest sympathies to his family and friends. And you can see that he was a member of council back in the day when everyone looked a little bit younger. The evening of September 14 was the Second Annual Mayor's Charitable Gala. The event was well-attended with over 600 guests who helped raise $648,000 for the Township of Langley, Firefighters Charitable Society, and the Langley Hospice Society's new residents. And I want to thank everyone who attended and donated monies to these worth, worthy causes. I also wish to thank Standard Arrow for providing the amazing, unique facility. Councillor Arneson, Councillor Davis, Councillor Kuntz, and Councillor Woodward were also there in attendance. And it was well-attended, and thank you. And another thing it does is it provides a lot of awareness to, I think, to what Hospice is doing with the new project that they're, they're building. So very, very successful, and that's, congratulations to our community. On Sunday, September 15, I attended the Terry Fox Run in Alda Grove. And congratulations to everyone for coming out and continuing Terry's legacy. And two young ladies in Alda Grove, Emily and Rebecca, have kept this run going over the last few years. And I did my 5K run walk and quite enjoyed it. On Monday, September 16, a number of staff members and I participated at the Langley Possibilities Try on a Disability Program. We were in competition with the City of Langley. And according to ZOSHA, the event organizer, we were beat by the city. But I'm going to appeal that, no doubt. But it was a worthwhile and enlightening experience. And I think part of the bet that we had is that I get to wear a City of Langley shirt next council meeting. But because it's under appeal, I think Mayor Vowell is going to wear a City of Town, or Township of Langley shirt. But we want to make sure that, that we're promoting what ZOSHA is, is doing and us to raise awareness on people with disabilities and show what can be done. So I want to thank her for that. It is challenging when you're limited in your mobility. On Monday, September 16, as a zero-waste chair, I provided a presentation to the Corporation of Delta's Mayor and Council regarding our regional waste management. On Tuesday, September 17, was the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Annual General Meeting, where we swore on new President Brad Kendall. Councillor Whitmarsh attended and provided a few words as a sponsor from TW. So I know it's your other life, but I had to get a picture of our councillor up there. And congratulations to Brad on his role as a president, and he has that honor for the next two years. The opening ceremonies for the very exciting 2019 World Lacrosse, World Lacrosse Men's Indoor World Championship were held September 18 at the Langley Event Centre. Councillor Arneson, Councillor Kuntz, Councillor Long, and Councillor Whitmarsh were also in attendance. And I attended the final game of the World Lacrosse Men's Indoor World Championship on Saturday, September 28, which was very exciting and saw another great win for Canada. Our team defeated the Iroquois Nationals 19 to 12 in the gold medal game. Now, the score is 19 to 12, but I tell you, it was nail-biter right to the end. You know, it was, that game can change in a hurry. And it was a very fast and very well-skilled game. So they claimed the title for the fifth time in a row. And I congratulate everyone involved with the Canadian team and all those who worked so hard to bring this exciting event to Langley. Councillor Arneson, Councillor Kuntz, Councillor Long, and Councillor Whitmarsh were also in attendance to this exciting game. Did I miss anybody? I got everybody? And a great game. On Saturday, and there's 20 teams that came, Costa Rica, I think, came out 20th. But I'm, it's kind of nice to see that all of these countries provided teams. And I think it's a sport that's going to grow, and they're hoping to make it an Olympic event at some time in the future. So it needs that international exposure. On Saturday, September 21, was a diamond anniversary show for the Fraser Valley Rock and Gem Club in Alda Grove. I learned a lot about gems and rocks, and it was a great event. And then off to the pier reopening in White Rock. The construction was completed and it's back open. So I was there for the ribbon cutting, and good to see that White Rock has their, their pier back. It's a huge economic driver for that community. And I think, and a lot of folks here like to go down to White Rock and stroll on the pier. So it was good there to support Mayor Walker. Then it was off to the annual B C Thanksgiving Food Drive. And that's handled by, out in, I was going to say Willoughby, at the Church of Latter Day Saints. Is that what it's called? And yeah, they do a great job, and they collected, I think, 17,000 or 27,000 pounds of food. And they do this every year. And then popped in the International Association Firefighters, IFF Fill the Boot Campaign. I got there, was able to put my money in the boot, and they got a call and had to go. So that was into that. But I think they raised a lot of money for that, too. On Sunday, September 22, was the annual Campbell Valley Wine Run in South Langley, with proceeds benefiting Pacific Riding for Developing Abilities. I was also, I was able to toast the runners and wish them a great run. And you can see the costumes that were there. We've got Toy Story I'm sitting amongst. And, you know, they're great, and lots of costumes. A little bit rainy, but people were out there walking and running and drinking wine. It was well-together. On Sundays, on Sunday, September 22, was also the annual Rivers Day event at the Derek Double Day Arboretum. Councillor Arneson and I attended the event, where there was a lot of water on hand due to the rain. So I did mention in my speech that we needed the rain to fill the rivers. The week of September 23 was the annual U B C M convention in Vancouver. Councillor Kuntz, myself, and staff members attended meetings with the Ministry of Housing and with the Ministry of Agriculture. And we, it was a lot of great, great sessions, took workshops on housing, on ride hailing, and other, other issues that all councils are facing. On Saturday, September 28, I attended the Food for Famine event in Fort Langley, and then the groundbreaking event for the, I'm going to pronounce this properly, Emeas? Emos?
Emeas.
Emeas, thank you. I knew I had it close. Emeas House Affordable Rental Project being undertaken by Shepherd of the Valley Church, along with Councillor Arneson. I know Councillor Arneson was able to stay for the dinner afterwards and gave, gave words on behalf of the township there. So this project, it's great to see it underway. It's going to provide affordable housing to many people in our community. And it was good to be there for the groundbreaking. Looking forward to the ribbon cutting. Council, attended by Council. Acting Mayor Richter was busy also on September 11. She was at the Langley Agriculture Advisory Economic Enhancement Committee Farm Tour. Oh, it looks like Councillor Kuntz is milk on the cow, along with Councillor Kuntz. Did you get any milk?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you got some milk. Oh, good. So you're a pro. Okay. September 14, the acting Mayor Richter brought greetings to the Greater Vancouver Zoo's inaugural Turtle Dash. And on September 25, was a judge in the apple bake-off contest. I think you got all the fun events this time, and I, that's right. Councillor Arneson attended the war canoe launch September 26, and followed up by attending the Langley Centennial Museum Exhibit Opening, Langley Collects. On Saturday, September 21, was the annual lawn bowling event. Attending for the township team was Councillor Long. Councillor Woodward? Oh, you didn't go? And you didn't go. Oh, Councillor Kuntz?
I was the only one.
Councillor Kuntz was there, a whole, did we beat the city?
Well, I tried my best.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah. So, okay, sorry. That was just in the notes here.
I did beat Paul Elbra.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, that's most important. Beat Paul. Perfect. Upcoming events. Liberation 75 Tulip Bowl Planting Event will be held October 8 at 1 P M, the Derek Double Day Arboretum, in commemoration of the liberation of the Netherlands by Canadian troops 75 years ago. And I understand the Consul General of the Netherlands will be in attendance and will also be speaking. Lots of meetings happened. On September 10, I attended the trustee meeting for the Municipal Finance Authority. I attended the Mayor's Council Finance and Governance Committee. On September 11, September 13, Metro Regional Planning. The 16, Human Resources and Governance Committee meeting. September 17, Finance and Audit Committee meeting. September 19, I was going to go to the Water Committee, but I got a flat tire and had to turn around. So that was, scratched that one off. On September 20 was Translink Mayor's Council. And then we were busy at U B C M for the week. Councillor Patriona Arneson attended the Metro Climate Action Committee meeting, and Councillor Bob Long, the Metro Housing Committee meeting, and Steve Ferguson, Metro Liquid Waste Committee meeting. So I don't know if, and, and Councillor Richter went to the Metro Parks.
Treaty negotiations.
And treaty negotiations, thank you. So don't always capture everything. We're a busy council. So if council has anything to add, that's my report. Thank you. Councillor Long.
Oh, yeah. Following up on the Metro Vancouver Housing, there's been a lot of discussion about our activities. And there's a fabulous publication that I've got one personalized for each member of council to look at. It's a report that staff put out. It talks about who the housing corporation is, and what the profile is, some of the financial highlights, the strategic directions and so forth. It's a very informative brochure, and it's something we should be proud of. I think the work that the committee's doing is laudable, and I appreciate being on the committee.
Great, thank you. Any else? Council?
Well, it talks about.
I have one.
Oh, it said your name on it.
Oh, okay. Councillor Steve. There we go. That's Councillor Steve's. Okay, so that completes my report. And council, I'll just close that off. So now we move on to other business. And Councillor Woodward, I'll put your mic on. Councillor Woodward.
So I'd like to, I'm not going to read it. So we skipped the whereas's. I just want to note for council's information, the whereas's were carefully chosen, and the words in the motion were carefully chosen as well. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to prepare and report back with a new or revised draft policy outlining future application of the subdivision and development servicing bylaw and highway traffic bylaw to potentially allow for the widening of driveways up to 7.5 meters in residential compact neighborhoods, subject to staff input, for lots with sufficient frontage, such that minor widenings will not adversely affect prevailing aesthetics, drainage capacity, and neighborhood on-street parking supplies. So move.
Secondaire? Councillor Richter, second.
I'll speak briefly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got an email from a resident approximately, oh, I don't know, six to seven weeks ago, maybe two months ago now, and drove out there and had a meeting with her. She was trying to widen her driveway a few feet to have her grandson park on her driveway, because he lives with her, because he can't afford to rent anywhere currently. And by the time he arrives home from shift work, because of the consumption of on-street parking in some of these Willoughby neighborhoods, he has to park many, many blocks away sometimes and then walk in the dark, because it's a half-built-up area, to get home. And was going through the process, and I'll cut a long story short, has run into a roadblock where she's not permitted to widen this driveway because of some of the bylaws. So we have one bylaw, the highway and traffic bylaw, which allows for driveways up to 7.5 meters. But the subdivision and development servicing bylaw for new compact metres, but the subdivision and development servicing bylaw for new compact neighbourhoods says they should be no more than six. In her case, she's got about 13.5 metres of frontage and wants to widen approximately to 7.5, roughly the same percentage of six metres for a lot that's 11 metres wide, which is some of the newer development that we're seeing. And so rather than try to amend these bylaws, I think they're good bylaws. I think for new developments with lots of around 11 metres or so, that six metres is appropriate. But if you have extra frontage, that doesn't affect anyone, doesn't affect on-street parking supply. In this resident's case, she doesn't have parking on her side of the street. And if we can manage those and have a way to have a sliding scale perhaps, or some other options that staff can bring forward to solve this problem, to allow a resident to widen her driveway for her grandson. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, so it's been moving seconded. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I received an email earlier today from a resident in the township who is a certified arborist, and they have asked that an amendment be made at the end of it. So I'm proposing that amendment. So where it says, "Such that minor widenings will not adversely affect prevailing aesthetics, drainage capacity, neighbourhood on-street parking," I'd like to add at the end, "And optimal permeable root growth area and appropriate space for mature crown development for trees on private property and the municipal boulevards." So I would make that amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment? Councillor Arneson seconds, open up the amendment. Councillor Woodward on the amendment?
Speak to the amendment. So I think, can you give me some more background, Councillor Richter, on the reasoning behind and what the core concern is for the amendment?
I suspect the core concern is probably that anybody who can put a wider laneway in may run out and do that now to the detriment of trees, both our municipal boulevard trees as well as trees on their own property. But I think it's a fair thing that we should be looking at, because a lot of money has been spent on trees being put up in Willoughby after being cut down, so.
I think it is only an amendment to potentially look at that and have staff report back on that. So that's, I'll support the amendment, but I think it's kind of, it just, you know, the current tree protection bylaw allows you to just simply remove the tree and then widen the driveway. So I don't really see that widening the driveway is going to necessarily lead to the destruction of trees that isn't going to occur anyway for the source of widening, given that our current tree protection bylaw allows for the removal of trees for the cases of construction such as decks, septic fields, and presumably driveway widenings as well. So I certainly support it to at least have staff comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
That staff be directed to prepare and report back with a new revised draft policy. Now, listen, okay, in all due respect, I really think we should probably be asking for staff to explain what it is that...
Are you on the amendment? Just the amendment?
Yeah, I am on the amendment. So, oh, okay. Well, actually, the amendment is a funny one. It's about the trees. Well, I'd like to speak to the main motion, so I'll be quiet.
Okay, we'll just wait for that. Yeah. Councillor Arneson on the amendment?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, someone call the question on the amendment? Kerry, is the Councillor Long opposed? And we're back to the main motion. Councillor Arneson on the main motion, has amended?
Yes, thank you, worship. I thought about this, and I realize that Councillor Woodward has, as he's illustrated, done a very particular and detailed job about putting this forward, and it does have, I assume, a lot of options for staff to come back and report about how this could best be achieved, balancing of interest and things like that. My main concern when I read this is that we are talking about adding pervious materials to our environment where they don't currently exist. I'm not a planner, and so I have not devised the ratios of bare land and building envelope and the kind of infrastructure that we put in. But I would say that increasingly, we need more infiltration and not less, because the way I believe we design our communities is when the water cannot infiltrate into the ground, it goes into our stormwater. And so the stormwater is not feeding our streams, and it's not feeding our recharge in the areas. And the other problem with it really is that it creates heat islands, and I don't think there's any ways to get around that, because when you have an urban environment and you're taking away the green, what effectively you have is a heat island, so it absorbs the extra heat and then radiates it out, which is, you know, kind of counterproductive. So, regrettably, I won't be able to support this unless staff were willing to look at something that would be other than asphalt or cement. So there are options for doing that, there's alternatives, but they're more expensive, and I don't know how much we can dictate to homeowners exactly what materials they can use, but that would be my concern.
Councillor Long?
Yeah, I don't agree with sending this to staff for revised policy. I don't quite understand why we couldn't perhaps have some information about this specific issue and look for solutions. I can support that, but we continually, I believe, I feel at least, that we send staff on these missions to accomplish things, to change things, without proper research. I think what I heard in the brief description was that there's no parking on that side of the street anyway, so that means how come the guy can't get into the driveway? But I don't want to get into that. I mean, I would have just, I would just put some gravel down on a piece of two-by-four, and then I'd be able to drive up there. But anyhow, I think that this should be referred to staff perhaps for a report, but the problem I have, your worship, is that the motion is asking for a revised draft policy right out of the gate. Perhaps that will be the end result, but I don't know. I think I would like to try and curtail this type of actions from council, because we're not running the municipality in that respect. We need to ask staff for advice, and this sounds like a situation that could be addressed. Should there not be a variance that they could apply for? I don't know, but I think getting a policy right out of the gate is a little bit too, well, it just doesn't make sense to me to get to this level of adjusting policies without getting at least a report from staff. So I'll make a motion that it get referred to staff and come back and explain to us what the next step might be.
Okay, so there's a referral motion on the table. Any discussion on that? Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, just would have preferred to speak a second time, but I'll try to keep my comments limited to preventing the referral. I think you hit it on the nail there, Councillor Long, with the "I don't know" part. You know, we have residents that are out there widening the driveways anyway, so they're coming up against the situation where they're simply using gravel. They're using materials that don't match their existing driveways. And if you walk, I went two blocks out from this lady's house and found 15 driveways that were widened with gravel, with asphalt against concrete, different shades of concrete against asphalt and other kinds of concrete. So it's occurring anyway. And what happened to this resident, which I left out of the story, is she had a neighbour complain to the bylaw department, where the other neighbours didn't have this problem. So she, everybody else has been widening their driveway without following the process, without taking out a permit, without doing it properly, but because she, they didn't get a bylaw complaint per our policy for only acting when someone complains, she's the only one in the neighbourhood that's not widened their driveway, regardless of trees and concerns about the impervious materials and so on. It's occurring anyway. And so from my opinion, I don't like, think the referral was necessary, because I couldn't have written this motion to be more measured and cautious. New or revised draft policy, potentially allowing, subject to staff input. And now we're going to have a report to get staff input, to maybe then do another report in the draft policy, when we can look at it in one step. So I don't support the referral. The original motion is what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no further discussion. I'll call the question on, well, you gotta push a button. Okay, council vote.
Turning it off.
Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Councillor Richter, for helping me. I need the help tonight. I think that what Councillor Woodward has just done to give us more reason to do a little bit more research, this is not really time-sensitive, Councillor Woodward. I think that gives us an opportunity to review, to go out there and see more of the sites. I didn't have an opportunity to visit the particular location. It's not that I don't disagree with you. I think it's important that we do that. I had a notice of motion a few weeks ago about a road, the 24th and 19th. Most council members didn't know where it was, but, so we had that referred back. So I had to live with that. So certainly, give us an opportunity. I know you've done your research. I appreciate the work you've done here, and I'm sure it'll be back on the table before you know it, and because it does make sense. Just give us some more time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the referral? So I'll call the question on the referral. And the referral fails. Councillor Richter, Councillor Whitmarsh, Councillor Coontz, Councillor Woodward, Councillor Arneson opposed. We're back to the main motion. Councillor Ferguson on the main motion?
Oh, I'll take it from me.
So I'm going to call the question on the main motion. Kerry, it's Councillor Arneson, Councillor Long opposed. Is there any other business? Councillor Richter?
Okay, I've got a few things here. The first one is with regards to the items distributed today. Item number four on page six, which was a memo concerning the stormwater management system down in Brookswood, I believe it's on 204th Street area, and it's the Sunrise Lake Residents' Association. We're quite concerned about that, so I thank staff for producing that report. And they have gotten in touch with me. They are having their annual general meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, and they were wanting to have a 15-minute presentation by township staff on the stormwater management system. The contact is Mr. Al French, so I was wondering if we could refer this request to staff for them to contact Mr. French and...
Is there a request in the, sorry, in the memo? Have they submitted one?
No, it came to me as part of an email that they had sent with regards to their concerns on...
If you could forward that email to staff, then, and then that way there's a paper trail, and Mr. Seffy will be able to accommodate. Okay, thanks.
Okay. The second item was with regards to item number seven on page 14, the Township of Langley Recycling, a letter from Mr. Lee Lockwood, where he's asking where our garbage goes, wanting to make sure that Township of Langley garbage is not ending up in Malaysia, which I think is a very valid question. So I'm wondering if council could please get a copy of the response that staff will send to Mr. Lockwood, and if staff in their response could tell us where the downstream impact is of the garbage that is collected in Langley. So do we know where it's going definitively, and is it going into containers and being shipped overseas?
Depends if you're asking about the township municipal garbage collection or commercial garbage collection. There is a difference there, and so I think staff could address that, but I don't believe there's much going offshore, because right now the Metro Vancouver, all garbage is handled within the Metro Vancouver. It goes to the transfer stations and from there it's distributed. However, if someone's doing it without Metro Vancouver's knowledge, then we don't have much say, but this could have happened a long time ago. And so just, yeah, staff could respond. I believe they're responding. It's been referred to staff.
Yes, your worship, I can confirm. Maybe I can just start off by confirming the first point, the first item that Councillor Richter raised. You mentioned that staff will respond or will accommodate. I just want to make sure that staff will try to accommodate, because I'm not aware of the availability of staff. Typically, these meetings are in the evening, so we'll have to make sure that somebody that's qualified to speak on the stormwater management issues is actually available. So we'll try and accommodate after I get the actual date from Councillor Richter, based on the email that she will send. And on the second issue, yes, there will be a response sent to the writer of the letter, but I just want also, and will be copied to council, but I also want to advise council that there was a position paper issued by Recycle BC, which I think the letter that was sent to council suggesting improper, I guess, disposal of recycling material was the, I guess, a trigger for the communication. And Recycle BC have essentially advised that there were some inaccurate statements and misleading information contained with that report from the media outlet. And their report, their position paper is actually a public document that staff will also make sure council receives a copy of.
Okay. And the third item is item number eight, also on items distributed today, page 15. With regards to what's being called home traps, and I think it's a very illuminating item. I wasn't aware of it, or I didn't even stop to think about it. But people with disabilities who are living in multifamily housing developments where there's only one elevator can end up being trapped for long periods of time in their apartments because of the lack of available elevator repair services. So I wanted to refer that to staff to see if we could get a report back on whether or not we can require two elevators in all multifamily higher residential towers or buildings so that people can avoid this trapped situation.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the last one is, I just wanted to give council a heads-up. A few months back, I brought forward the whole issue of potlights under eaves and how these are very intrusive to area residents, particularly those that are living in the rural areas or the SR areas. And I believe staff sent a report back with regards to the best approach is to look at education. Judging by the number of new homes that are popping up all through the township with excessive potlights on them, I don't think the education piece is working. So I want to look at putting together something where we could limit the number of potlights under each eve with a specified lumen level, and also make that lumen level retroactive to all existing homes. So I just wanted to give council a heads-up that I'm going to be working on bringing that one forward, hopefully to the next meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Mr. Backen, can you give me a timeline for when you expect the notice of motion from Councillor Ferguson regarding the opening up of 24th at 196? Coming back?
Mr. Seffy, you could perhaps assist. This is the timeline for improvements to...
Consider opening or not opening 24th. I think it's, or sorry, I can't remember, 28th, I believe.
That's 24th, and it's actually the road improvements that may be necessary when the Suri site opens up. Do you have a timeline?
Yes, this year.
There was a notice of motion, I believe, from Councillor Ferguson. I can't remember the exact wording, but it was to get council direction on whether we wanted to. We were going to leave it closed until further council resolution to open it. I just want to confirm, that notice of motion was to refer back for a report. Want to confirm that before it comes back, it will not be opened? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Long?
24th, right? Okay, yeah. Item eight, I'm going back, Councillor Richter spoke to it, and I don't know if there was a motion made, but I have a concern here, too. And it doesn't have to be tall buildings. It can be a three-story building, and if there's no elevator, you're not getting from floor three down to the bottom. The other part that irks me a little bit is that in the parades, you have to go through two or three fire doors to get to the elevator, if it is working, and they're very seldom, if ever, you know, accessible for disabilities, no door openers. Maybe that's changed, maybe my building's old, but I just wondered if that could be included, accessibility in multi-story buildings. What do we have, and what could we do, and that kind of thing? So, your worship, I didn't hear a motion for a report. I think there were nods, but can we get, not necessarily a report, but some kind of information about that?
That was a distraction to staff.
I'm sure that, and this is not unique to the Langleys by any means. I often wonder at my building that there is two very heavy fire doors. I don't know how someone in a wheelchair get through those. Never mind, there's no disability parking downstairs either.
All right, is there any other business? Seeing none. I do have a couple things. Mr. Backen, perhaps we could get an update. It's been a while. Update on the truck route in Fort Langley. I know that we're looking at moving that truck route out of Fort Langley. There's some costs associated with that. But if we could get, council, have an update on where that's at. And the second thing is, I'll be bringing forward a motion next meeting, so I guess this is a notice of motion regarding the putting in a traffic control signal at 96 and Glover Road to refer to the budget process. So I just want to give notice to council that I'll be bringing that forward. There was a bit of an accident the other night where somebody, and I don't think a traffic light is going to stop this, that doesn't stop bad driving, that's for sure. Somebody blew the stop sign and plowed into suit... Somebody blew the stop sign and plowed into a suitcase and destroyed the front end of their business and wrecked their, wrecked their business for some time, so, but that sort of brought it to the forefront that perhaps a traffic control signal could be necessary. So, Mr. Seffy, it looks like you have something to say.
Yes, your worship, just wanted to perhaps potentially help you avoid some work if it doesn't need to be done, but at your discretion, I can just confirm that that item will be in the 2020 agenda, sorry, under 2020 budget.
Then I won't bring it forward as long as it's there. I'm only sure it's there.
It will be on the budget. It is one of the top priorities for signalization, but subject to council's discretion of approving the budget.
And that's all I wanted, so I appreciate that. I didn't realize it was there, so saves me a, saves me a motion. Thank you. Okay, Counsel Woodward?
I just want to confirm, Mr. Mayor, so they may, you're going to give a memo on the truck route situation in terms of what it's at, current cost projections, or what exactly was going to come back?
Yeah, Mr. Backen, I'd just like an update on where we are with that and what the next steps are, so, sure.
Just curious what's coming back, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we're fine.
Your worship, I think it's a memo as opposed to a presentation.
Memo, yeah, that's right. A memo would be good. Thanks, thanks for clarifying. All right, I need a motion to terminate. Counsel Long terminates, moves termination. Counsel Kuntz seconds it without her knowing. Oh, you say seconds, yep. All those in favor, opposed, carried. We'll take five minutes and then we'll go into.